All right, we ready to go ahead and start?
Yeah.
We're recording. Okay. Thank you all for your patience. We are going to go ahead and call our meeting to order at 6:11. This is our regular meeting of May of the North Florida Education. The first item on our agenda is public comments. The North Florida Education welcomes public comment. We always love to hear from our constituents. We just asked that the public limit their comments to five minutes or less if possible. And also know that it is our policy that we will not respond directly to comments today. But that if need be, or if warranted, you will be, we will follow up with you after the meeting. Okay, we do have a couple, well, we have one member of the public here. Amy, would you like to make a comment?
Please, thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to all the teachers.
Hold on, wait, I hear you. You can't hear me.
Okay. Hello?
Can you?
We'll feedback but didn't.
How about you mute me?
Mute your phone?
Yeah, but if you mute that, then.
You won't hear this, but we'll hear Amy, right?
She won't hear us.
But we'll turn it back on when we want to. That work?
Uh, no.
Like if you. I don't think there's volume coming from my computer, but I could be wrong. If you mute that, there, there, try that.
Is that better? I can't tell if I should speak or not.
Yeah, Amy, please speak.
Okay. All right.
Now, Amy, now.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say a big thank you to the teachers, the staffs, the administration, and the board members who were able to keep current over the summer and make all the decisions they needed to make to help Botel open in person. I think it's probably hard to impossible to prove the lack of a deficit, but I really believe that our kids are better off now without the academic, social, and emotional deficits that they would have had had Botel gone remote this year or for portions of this year. So thank you for all you did to make sure that our kids could gather in person, see their friends, and return to some sort of normalcy. I really appreciate that. I also wanted to take time today to just express my concern over the multi-age model that Botel has been going toward. And a disappointment I have over the fact that the decision was made to have fifth and sixth grades join the multi-age model next year. When we were first introduced as parents to the idea of the multi-age model at Botel, we were told four specific things that I can remember. One being the social-emotional benefit of students in this model, especially when we have a declining enrollment, smaller class sizes. It's really important for students to have the chance to be with other of their peers and learn that way with them, from them, teach them. And I have heard many anecdotes over the years, now that I have two kids in the multi-age model, about how that has been successful. And so I do, I do at least hear anecdotal evidence that that is the case with the model here at Botel. We were also told that there would be increased opportunity for differentiation in the classroom. But I haven't, I haven't heard overwhelming anecdotal evidence or quantifiable evidence to suggest that a lot of differentiates, that there has been that much increased opportunity for differentiation provided by this model. There, there in the same classroom now are twice as many benchmarks or standards that teachers are planning for and teaching to and assessing and monitoring. And I can understand how there could be more room for differentiation. I just don't, I haven't seen it. I haven't heard about it. And if it does exist, I'd love to hear about how that has, has increased in the classrooms for the kids. A third thing we were told as parents is that there would be more opportunity for staff teaching in a multi-age model to collaborate with peers and that that would indirectly benefit the children because, you know, in a school as small as Botel, we have one teacher per grade and they're their own island. They don't have another third-grade teacher to collaborate with. But with a multi-age model, there would be two teachers teaching the content, the standards, the age group, and that that would give an increased opportunity for collaboration amongst colleagues and that would benefit the kids with better lessons, better response to problems, et cetera. But that has only happened for the current three, four group and that the multi-age groups that have come below them have not had that opportunity. We've not kept the staffing, which gets to the fourth point that we were told as parents is that the classroom sizes would mean, would be small still. It would be a small teacher-to-student ratio, which is one of the most influential factors in education that we know of that will affect academic growth for students. And again, it's true for the three, four multi-age group because they have two groups and the classroom sizes are, you know, a nice small group. But for the one, two, I think they're up to 16 or 17, which is on the outside, you know, edge of a comfortable group in a traditional model. But again, with twice as many standards to assess, I just, I wonder what the strain and the stress is on the teacher and how that will indirectly, again, impact the students. I do appreciate that Botel showed responsiveness and flexibility when they changed the model of instruction for math this year and, and responded to a need that they saw and went to a different, you know, not multi-age approach for, just for math. So I do appreciate that they are monitoring somehow and responding to. But as a parent, I don't, I'm unaware of what the benchmarks are that Botel has set to look for, to assess the effectiveness on academic growth of this model. And I would hope that we have benchmarks that we're looking for so that we know that this multi-age model is at least as good as the traditional grade model. Hopefully it is. Hopefully it's better, but I don't know what those benchmarks are. I don't know how close we are to them. And I'd, I'd love to know more about what evidence we have that this model is working for our, our children in terms of their academic growth. So again, thank you for all that you have done, all the board members, all the staff, teachers, the administration, to make this year as close to normal as we, as you could for, for kids in the middle of a worldwide pandemic. But I'd love to hear more about the evidence that we have to know that this model is not just a financial benefit for the budget, but of academic benefit to the students as well. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you guys. Sorry, I know I forgot something. Sorry, I dropped the gun, got some feedback, kept John on his toes. Making sure that stuff works. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Thanks for your comment. Okay, moving on to our next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 6.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 6.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
I abstain.
I abstain.
Okay, so we have two, all those in favor, then all abstentions? You guys can wave your hand too.
Yes, I have, yeah.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Correspondence. I did want to mention some correspondence that I received from the Board of Finance Chair about the fund that has been set up to, that can be used as a holdover or is certain money, if we have money left at the end of the year, we can keep money in that account that can then be used on behalf of the school. Mike has gone ahead and set up that fund and, and put it in place. And he sent an email just letting us know that that had moved forward.
Wow.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Is there a cap to what that fund can be?
Yes. So by law, I believe it is 4%, but it's doing 2%.
They can hold up to 2% of the adopted budget.
Okay.
Okay. So for this year, they could have set aside $48,000.
Okay. Um, so yeah, so it's up to. The only thing that I thought was kind of noteworthy about the language of the account as he set it up is that it talks about using that money for capital improvements specifically. I think that's a bit unusual. I think that that money is usually, like, the idea is that it be used for educational portion of the budget. But that said, you know, I feel like it is a movement in the right direction. And I feel like, you know, anything that improves the.
It's something.
Yeah. It's a way we can improve our, our experience for our children and, you know, it's a way that we can, you know, figure out how to balance our budget that works best for everyone.
It also said not with scanning that it could use for emergency purposes if. They are rules.
That's, that's true. So it's not hard and fast haul.
Right, so we have a new boiler and all that stuff, but like, you know, but if something happened, we could. Have to move parking lot, right.
So could be used if it needed to be used over a budget. And, and yeah, so as John said, there is like a part of it that says that like, if we want to use it for something else, that's possibility, but we just have to talk about it and make a case for why that would make sense. Thank you. Okay. And I think that was the only one I wanted to talk about. Is there any correspondence you wanted to share, Mary Beth?
I didn't receive any.
No. Okay. And then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, one of the recent developments around remote learning and, oh, Amy, oh, Amy is here, okay. Thank you for the comments, Amy, about the remote learning or the in-person learning. I have to underscore that, that it really was a great benefit to our children to be able to be in school all in person all year. The news that we received this week, superintendents meet every week with the, with the team from the State Department of Education, from the Health Department, from the Governor's Office, as well as from the Office of Early Childhood. And they are not going to have any legislation that requires school districts to offer remote learning as an option.
Excuse me, is it just me or is I missing the superintendent?
I didn't write it out.
Oh, you did, all right, okay.
And I'm just reading some papers.
I might have missed something.
If you prefer that you get that in your packet ahead of time, I'm happy to continue to do that. And this news is just hot off the press. It wouldn't have been in the packet anyway. The, so the law will not require us, as it did this past year, for remote learning to be an option. They will provide guidance for when remote learning would be appropriate. However, the expectation is that all schools will open in person, you know, moving forward. So that's, that's good news. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, and I didn't, you know, there's really no other news to report, but I didn't want to leave time to discuss the multi-age model because, as you know, last month, we said it's always been the plan to every year to move it up. And then when we got to fifth and sixth grade, there might be some difference based on the fact that at the time we started this model, that, you know, we knew fifth and sixth grade could be very, very different. And when we said last week that our plan was to move forward, we would certainly have some discussion about it. We would, you know, certainly want to hear, you know, any concerns or questions because, and I think that, you know, Lauren and I have proved to be responsive. And, you know, not to say that if, you know, some people weren't in favor, we'd say, okay, we won't do it. But we certainly want to hear the concerns, the questions, and looking at the current environment and what we know to be true and what we don't know to be true about the enrollment numbers that we would, you know, certainly, as we did with the math, look to what would make the most sense for kids moving forward. So I'm really glad that Amy shared her questions and concerns. And in our discussion, you know, while we're not going to respond to Amy personally right now, I, I would like to, you know, cover some of those concerns if, if people would like to, you know, hear some of the rationale and some of the response, you know, to especially, you know, what we had said we would do and what might or might not be evident. So I believe the discussion open to, to the board. Any comments or questions that you would have for me or Lauren?
Well, so, I mean, I, I think talking about this model is really important. You know, it's a really, it's a different way of doing things. And of course, I also try to remember that so much is different about education now than it was before. You know, when I think about, you know, is it chaotic in a classroom where you have this broad range of abilities or ages or maturities? And I don't wonder how that impacts the classroom. But then I also try to remember that, you know, when I was in school, the teacher taught at the front of the classroom and the students sat at their desks and they listened. I have, I don't think that's how it works so much anymore. It seems to me that it's a much more interactive kind of scenario and that, that individualized learning path, I do feel seems like it's taken hold. I've kind of, I guess that's my question for you and, and for Lauren. Can you talk to us about what that looks like in the classroom? And is that the case? Like, do you feel like so far with the multi-age that we've seen in, because we've had, you know, some experience with it now, like, do we have, can we give some kind of evidence? Like, can we, like, is there a way to show? Or, or how could we assess how we, you know, has this had a positive impact? Like, is this a good, you know, have things gone well?
So, you know, Lauren, I'm going to start with that and then jump in at any time.
Well, I have to unmute through the whole thing if she's going to jump in.
Oh, you go in the chat if you need to talk so I can unmute. I don't know if she could, did she even hear you?
I think she did.
Yeah. So, you know, just to, I, I love the way Amy phrased that, that, you know, with the in-person learning, we really have no way of knowing what it, what the deficit was that our kids avoided. And so with the, the multi-age model, we really have nothing to compare, like, you know, what it would have been like over the past few years if we hadn't done that, other than we know we would have had some class sizes of five. We would have had some classes where there was one single female in the group. And so in terms of the, the social part, you know, we did say that we expected that the numbers would stay low. And at the time when we talked about that, we said, just because we can combine kids, we're not going to get rid of a teacher to save money and have large class sizes. Small class size would continue to be of great value. And where we have had numbers up to 16, you know, we've had classes here for years up to 20. And, you know, when you look at surrounding places, 16 looks enviable. I think, you know, many teachers would, you know, die to have 16 in their class. So we don't really consider that large class size. But, you know, I can understand that, you know, when you compare it to other classes here that are 12 and 11, that it is on the higher side. So many of the things, Lauren and I have talked about this, it's really hard to quantify. So when we talk about differentiated instruction, I would hope, and perhaps there's a way that we can survey parents, that when parents had parent-teacher conferences, they felt confident that their child was learning content and concepts that were appropriate for where they were developmentally and where they were on the continuum of learning towards a standard. That, you know, when parents talk to their teacher, they, or even, you know, based on their child's experience, that teachers or parents felt comfortable that their kids were not being, you know, presented with material that was too far above their head and they were struggling too much, or the kids were coming home and saying, oh, this is just too easy, I'm bored. So, you know, the, the differentiated instruction, the, the evidence of that would be that kids are feeling comfortable, that they're in that proximal zone of development in terms of what they're being taught, and that parents are seeing that their kids are, you know, again, not struggling excessively or the other end of the, the spectrum. We truly, truly meant every word that we said when we said if we had two sections rather than, because at the time, we had two firsts, two seconds, two thirds, two fourths, that there would be that ability for teachers to collaborate. What we didn't anticipate as the, was the rapidity, is that a word? Of the declining enrollment, which, you know, for us to keep two sections, we would have had class sizes of seven and eight instead of 16, which was really, you know, defeating the purpose of socialization. So at those points, it wasn't a budgetary decision that we would move to one section. It was just that a class of 16 was really better than, you know, two classes of, you know, seven and eight. And what we have done to compensate for that, we now have a literacy resource teacher, we have a math resource teacher, and every teacher at every level is, is sitting and meeting with those teachers every single week. So the collaboration among adults is there. It's not quite in the manner that we envisioned it early on when we thought we would have two sections for a much longer time in more, at more of the levels than we did. We have utilized our paraprofessionals, so particularly in a class where we had 16 children. I think, and Lauren can keep me, you know, honest if this is not the case, but there's pretty much been a paraprofessional in that classroom all day long or a, a resource teacher, so that the ratio of adults to children was much lower than one to 16. And I'm going to just put this out there because I know in the past I have been perceived as being defensive. And on the one hand, I, I will defend Botel to the nth degree. And I've never made a decision that I didn't believe was best for kids and feel compelled sometimes to defend things. I hope I'm not sounding defensive about this now, but I just want to reiterate that, you know, the promises we made were made in really good faith. And then where, where they were not viable, we have been able to mitigate. The cast in stone, again, like nothing is ever cast in stone. We will listen to concerns and questions and again, consider all of these things. We plan to have parent meetings, you know, to kind of field some more, you know, questions in person, what people might be concerned about to respond to. And at the end of the day, all I can promise you is that, you know, Lauren, I will sit down and we will look at all of this input from the people who might be really looking forward to their kids continuing in this model because it's been a successful, successful model. We will listen to parents who have concerns and reservations and try to come up with what may not be 100% multi-age or 100% you know, traditional fifth, sixth grade and bring that back to the board before, you know, we, you know, it's getting to the point of the year where we do need to be able to start letting teachers know what they're going to teach and make plans to make sure that they're prepared for that. But we will continue to have these discussions and consider anything that is brought up here or from our parents. To date, neither Lauren and I have heard anything from any parent. I don't know if it's because, you know, they're just haven't been tuning in, if it hasn't, we don't, they haven't, you know, it hasn't just occurred to them, but we've not heard anything. So it's good to hear from Amy and, and Anne and Ginger, especially, you know, people who have kids in the school.
You know, and I want to say, thank you, thank you very much. And I want to say, I really believe and respect that the experts in our building are the ones to make this choice, but I do appreciate that you are responsive to hearing people's feedback. And I have, and I have to say, I have to commend you on the fact that I think you've done it in the past. You know, when it had, when you found that fifth grade needed to be grade-level bans, then you made that change. I remember when you made that change because I pushed back on it and was like, come on, we're in multi-age. Let's not, let's not muddy the waters. But, so I think that really opened my eyes to the idea that there is not one, like, concrete mold that you have to fit into. And I appreciate that you have been looking for ways to make this work that work for our particular circumstance because we are, you know, we're a unique space. We've got our own set of, of kids and personalities. And, and I, and I appreciate that you are, you know, willing to look at that and think about that for how it's going to work best. And I also want to say, I just, you know, I do support that, you know, you'll make the right choices. Thank you.
Lauren did type in, yes, that is the case to something at 6:31. And I read it at 6:32. I believe that the pairism and this teacher, the adult ratio has maintained a very low.
Right.
About the power of support, that's what she said.
Okay.
Can I add something as far as?
Yeah, of course.
So I also know that, you know, having one child in multi-age and has been with older and younger, I mean, it works well. I like the larger sort of classroom sizes than having maybe seven in the class. My, I still am concerned about pre-K and K being together with pre-K being part-time. But I also know that our new education department is pushing for full-day pre-K, which would change a lot. So that may change in the next few years anyway. And I was kind of happy this year with COVID, with having to keep in the small cohorts, to have to have a small cohort, but I know if only two pre-kers come in, you can't have two kids come to, come to school, like.
Yeah.
That's not, that is not feasible, but it, I, I don't like that. It, it can disrupt the kindergarten and it's like, oh, they're just coming to visit for three hours today, three days a week, instead of really fully being invest, I mean, can we offer full-day pre-K for two kids? Is that an option? To make it so that the pre-K k-er together or is that not?
So I wondered, the, the pre-K half-day.
I mean, it's not a budgetary thing, right? Because the teacher. Well, it is a budgetary thing because of the bus.
Oh, the bus, yeah.
Sure.
Well, then it would be cheaper.
It would be cheaper. The, and it, it would be doable. I will tell you that, you know, they're very well, maybe, I don't know, we've only got two people coming in. But there are many parents of preschoolers who don't want their kids in school full day. They're, they're barely four and they don't want them in a full regiment today. But we, we could certainly, we could certainly do that. And I think it's really fortuitous because if in fact we only have two preschoolers coming in, I'm not sure how we would justify paying a teacher $60,000 to teach two kids. You know, I mean, this was never about a budgetary funding thing, but it would be, you know, something to contend with if in fact we had a traditional model and only had two pre-K students, but. Well, no, so like the pre-kers coming in, if they had a traditional, our current three-day-a-week, three-hours-a-day, that isn't $60,000 a year, that's like 30 maybe, right? Oh, that's true. That's true. Yeah. But still, it's, you know, it's them setting up curriculum for two children and how do you, you know, it's about socializing and then use to school. Two is really small, but. So that, that was just my other concern, but who knows what we may be required in two years to have.
Yeah, maybe that is something we should consider though, the full day. I mean, there's two, two families, we could probably ask them.
And if you had two parents who, you know, agree, we could do that with no problem. The conflict would be if, say, one did and one didn't.
Yeah, that would be tricky.
You can't have that, you know, experience be different for two kids who are then going to move on. And, you know, but.
Or maybe make it three full days and, you know what I mean? Like, that seems like a less disruptive.
That would save us money.
And it would save us money.
Yeah.
And so be a middle ground.
So like, it would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, full day. Yeah, this way also, so my, my youngest went here and then went to Nelsi after, which is still school for them until, I don't want to take away from their, their experiences, but. I don't know, I just feel, what, what can we offer? That might help other families come in too, like, we have three full-day pre-K, might get more families.
And we were ahead with pre-K right from the beginning.
Oh, so Lauren said the only problem with that is the continuity of instruction is interrupted on the days when pre-K isn't there.
Yeah.
Right. Although, you know, anecdotally, the teachers consistently who have taught the early primary will tell you that it's not a disruption with it when they plan it. They plan things that are conducive to, to the whole group. They've got a para in there, so when they need to be separated into groups, they are, have the ability to do that. And that there's a natural break so that when the kids, the, the pre-kers, the youngers, leave to go home, the kindergartners, Lauren scheduled, they go to lunch. So it's a natural break. Some go this way on a bus and some go to lunch and then they come back and then the afternoon is, you know, so it, they're able to schedule that. So it, it would be a little bit difficult to schedule that similarly if it was three full days and then two. But I, I trust that our teachers would be able to do that. And, and again, you know, we would have to, you know, see if. And the other thing is, I don't see this happening, is that next year, you have 12 pre-kers come in. But, you know, is it sustainable to offer it? You know, I mean, for one year, we could say this is a pilot, we're going to try, you know, and we'll make the decision based on what the law is, what the population is as we move forward. Because, you know, if we've learned anything, you know, you, you can't kind of anything staying the same. So we're going to have to be willing to, to flex with, with the situation that life throws us. Yeah. So then as far as the five-six, having two five-six next year, I mentioned in a different meeting, my.
I I mentioned in a different meeting my concerns about that. And having the sixth grade have their sixth-grade experiences instead of having some kids get to do things because they're go, they're moving up to regional while their other classmates aren't having those experiences. Or do we offer everything to the five-six? Like, is there now a class trip that is two classes?
Which if that class, if that sixth-grade class gets small enough, that actually probably would be better, right? It'd be a bigger experience to go with a bigger group on your trip, you know, if it gets to be small.
Right, but then it's fundraising for two, two classes and everything. I I just, I I I was thinking about, because I'm doing most, you know, many of the fundraisers and many of the the yearbook and the the video and it's like, how do you then separate when?
Yeah, those sixth-grade rite-of-passage things.
Yeah. Well, and you know, it it's just a matter of time, it's a year or two before we get there anyway, because the way the numbers are going, it's inevitable that it may be as early as two years, we're gonna have fifth and sixth graders combined because of the numbers. And Lauren and I have begun to throw around some of the things like, do we do the, you know, the nature's classroom, the big trip every other year? And then do something different the off-year? Do we, you know, we have to start thinking and planning for that because it's going to happen anyway. It's just, is it gonna happen next year or is it gonna happen the year after that? And certainly when the decision is cast in stone, we will bring together, you know, parent groups and begin to talk about, you know, is it, you know, do the parents, are they gonna wanna fundraise like that for two years in a row, you know, for small group, half the group? Or do we look at things that we can do, keeping the group together, but making sure that everybody gets that experience at some point? And then when it gets to things like yearbook and promotion, of course, you know, there are going to be special things that the sixth graders have and the fifth graders will have things that they do. But we're gonna have to grapple with that eventually.
Um, I thought that, I mean, I know you guys have talked about different scenarios, that's what I was talking about, like that flexibility, I think is a really great idea. That idea, like, an idea of the, like, homeroom, like, grade-band homerooms. That kind of makes some sense to to me, like, just like thinking about it in terms of, you could then say, like, the homeroom piece, like, homeroom's not everything, but it is like a home base for people where they have their, like, morning meeting and they can talk and that sort of thing. And maybe if you had, like, special stuff like, okay, well, then that class is going to do something. It would be like a way that they're already sort of segmented into that group.
Well, I I I think I know what you mean, but I think that it would be problematic for a couple of things. So that morning meeting is really important for the cohort of kids to have together. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have the same con, you wouldn't have the the gel that you have. If you, this group is starting the day off and having their own meeting and then they're coming together. It then becomes more of a, of an artificial coming together. And we have, it it, this is probably never visible outside, but we have bent over backwards to utilize every possible instructional meeting, uh, minute of the day. And if you have kids going into homework and they come home and they transition there and then maybe they take attention and they take a lot. And then they're gonna transition back here, you lose a lot of time if you add those minutes up over the course of the day. And we really, the whole multi-age model, it gets away, we shouldn't even be talking about kindergartners in first grades or third graders and fourth graders. They really are the early primary, the primary, the intermediate, the youngers and the olders. And if you start to, you know, like, for the math, we had to separate kids out, but that should be the exception, we shouldn't be having, you know, several times in a day where kids are designated as a particular grade level and then other parts of the day, youngers, olders, intermediates. It would really defeat the mult, we wouldn't be the multi-age model at 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 heart.
Well, I feel like that doing that at least in fifth and sixth grade would help prepare them for middle school because that's what they're doing in middle school and high school. They go to homeroom, they have their sort of morning meeting and then they they do separate and but then come back together. They're not all together for every class, even in their col, they're different, other colors, what are the the groups?
Teams, yeah.
The teams.
Yeah, and we had talked about, you know, some versions of that. And even with, if, you know, in the in the vision right now, the multi-age at fifth and sixth grade, they would be, according to age, technical, grade level for math, they would be switching teachers. So that one teacher would be teaching science and they would go with as their cohort, but they would have a different teacher for science, a different teacher for social studies, a different teacher, you know, for math perhaps. So that there'd be some of that experience. But again, you know, we can maintain the traditional model, it would be for one year. And then we've got to be ready to ease into that one, one cohort of fifth, sixth-grade kids that are will then be the upper intermediate.
So will you have benchmarks that that will be something that you can use to measure the success of the process? I understand that it's it's not something that we can avoid having happen, but I'm just wondering how to, how to measure the impact on the students.
So one of the things that we had not anticipated was COVID. Now, the standards in Common Core, they're the same standards for for the grade levels, they just look different. And our teachers, that's how they plan, they have the standards, this is what it looks like in the continuum. What it does afford children in in that differentiated instruction that, while this is what it looks like at, say, second grade. If I have a kid who would traditionally be in second grade, but they're over here where, you know, this is what it looks like in third grade, that's what that kid is going to be, their instruction is going to be based on. So the 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 comparison is is in kids' progress. So Lauren can, is going to be able to provide a lot of our benchmark assessment. Every one of our kids is growing, they're all moving in the same direction, in the right direction. What we don't have to provide more quantitative evidence is like an S-Back that will show, you know, we we only have that evidence from Warren, where over the years they had that, where they had three elementary schools, one was a multi-age model. And year after year after year, the students who went through the multi-age model scored significantly higher than the the students in elementary, the two other elementary schools. So we haven't had any standardized assessment data. And what we really look at is is individual kids, are they growing, are they moving, are they getting a year's value? And that's all we can look at and and tell people right now in terms of hard and fast evidence. You know, our benchmark testing, the kids have been doing the interim assessments from S-Back. So we have really good information in terms of how our kids are learning and how they're they're growing and moving forward. But we we don't have the typical, you know, state assessment to to look at the cohorts of kids and compare them to others.
I realize we don't have, like, experimental, like, control groups because we're such a small group, right? But I'm just hoping before, like, decisions are made, especially maybe for next year with the five-six class, that maybe parents get some information, like, we're we're considering this instead of this is what we've decided and that's it. Because I think they wanna feel a little bit of that their voices are being heard.
And I do understand that years ago when we had all the parent meetings and we said, we were, we explained, we're going to be a multi-age school, we're gonna start here and we're gonna grow it every year through the grades. Our parents who were like upper grades, they weren't tuning in and listening. So it it's not new news, it's not like all of a sudden we're saying, we made a decision that fifth and sixth is going to be multi-age. That's been the plan all along, but until it hits people where they live, they're not paying attention. So now all of a sudden, and that's fine and we will listen to people. But I just think it would be not accurate to say that it's a decision that we just made all of the, all of a sudden. Because when we adopted the multi-age model, it was the plan all along that it would grow through the years as we moved forward.
Lauren said, when I presented the academic progress last year, the data was based on STAR and S-Back. Our reading progress since multi-age has increased significantly. That's very helpful.
Yeah, you know, I think change is always a little stressful. And so, and so much has changed in the last few years, it's hard to kind of get your head around all these different, different pieces. But I feel really, I feel really good that everybody's paying attention, like, you know, it's not, things are not, decisions are just not made and then followed. Like, we're paying attention to what is the impact of it, how do people feel about it, how is it, you know, what are the best choices, what what is it gonna look like in two years, what's it gonna look like in four years? And so, you know, I trust in that process that, you know, will come to a good, a good place and a good conclusion, you know, and.
You know, I I I I'm thinking that it might be a good idea to have a, I'm sorry, Lauren, I usually want these ideas by you because, you know, when I think off the top of my head, it could be dangerous. But we might wanna have a parent meeting with our current fourth graders and fifth-grade families. So that, you know, people who haven't, you know, maybe experienced it for a while.
Although our fifth graders have had one year, right?
So fifth grade, so this is the thing I think is tricky. So I'm looking just at our specific classrooms, right? The fourth grade has been in multi-age, I feel like, forever.
Yeah.
Like, I feel like that's the way they go to school, that's how those kids are gonna do it.
Yeah.
Um, the fifth grade has gone, they're out, they're in, they're out. And so, like, I think, I mean, just in terms of, like, simplicity, I think it's complicated to those those kids and to those parents, like, and and maybe I'm overthinking that because I'm not one of those parents or one of those kids. But like, that back and forth is probably just a harder thing to get your head around.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that they're probably feeling more impacted.
Yeah.
At which might be a reason why it makes sense to have next year be not a full transition. Maybe it's a soft transition, maybe there are pieces that are mixed and pieces that are kept differently. And maybe that's a good way to start testing out the waters of, how do we make sixth grade remain its, like, special capstone year? But also be included with the fifth graders, you know?
Lauren did, I just wanted, she wrote, there are many factors that have contributed to that growth, including multi-age model about the reading growth. I just wanna mention, not to interrupt what you said, but make sure she's heard. But I agree with what you said too.
So, you know, and and to consider too, that the fourth graders have only known that and there, it will be a loss for them. So, you know, there's both sides too, you know, we, they will, we had told those families that it would be multi-age up through and we're gonna have to tell those parents, oops, you know. So there's going to be someone who says, you weren't straight with us, you told us this and then this. Which is why all we can do is look at everything we know to be true and make the decision that we feel is really the very best for kids. And know that's, not everybody is going to be happy with that. And we will do our best to communicate the rationale behind it. And again, you know, I can promise you that we will consider all of the information, all the questions and concerns that we're hearing and see if we can't, you know, make sure that we are really coming up with something that is going to be best for all of the kids.
All right, great, that's my report. Let me unmute, Lauren, you can unmute and I'll, so she can hear her.
Are you cueing me to talk now? Okay. I too, thank you, Amy, for, you know, bringing up some really important points. And, you know, I wish that I could say with a hundred percent certainty that the growth that we've seen in our students is one hundred percent attributable to the multi-age model. But we know that there have been many changes that have occurred at Botel over the past years, staffing, you know, class sizes, new models of collaboration between our teachers. We haven't just implemented multi-age. So I think it is really a challenge to say, what is that progress attributed to? I I can say that I, like you, feel that the social emotional benefit for students is without a doubt there. You know, and and when I think about the, you know, some of the other things that you mentioned and some of the other questions that the board has, I would say that the way that, the two main ways that we differentiate in classes are by providing kids with choice. And the commitment that we've made instructionally with our staff and with teaching our students to give specific feedback. So the feedback that Amy would get on a writing assignment would be different than the feedback that Anne would get on a writing assignment. And the feedback that John would get about his reading would be different than the feedback Mary Beth would get about her reading. And those are the main ways through choice by our students and the differentiated feedback they receive from their teachers and peers, which would contribute to that level of differentiation. I think, you know, that moving forward with the multi-age model in fifth and sixth grade has a lot of benefits. But I don't disagree that, you know, being responsive to people's concerns, you know, is the way to go. I think that we have shown that we listen and we want to do what's best for kids. And I think that in this situation, looking at maybe a flex multi-age model is, you know, a strong possibility, particularly for our fifth graders who have primarily been in a traditional classroom. So if we look to make reading and writing workshop, perhaps a time where we implement the multi-age model. But we have grade-level instruction for math and and maybe science and social studies where they still switch. It feels like a middle school model, like you were saying, Ginger, that prepares students for, you know, seeing different faces in their classes at some times and and then being with different teachers and having to be flexible. And that is also exciting for kids. When they go up to the middle school, they like moving around, they, you know, enjoy that different engagement with different kids. And I think that, you know, it creates, it, for next year, it might be a way to provide teachers with the collaboration with a grade, you know, with a partner who's doing the same thing as them for some of the day. And still provide our students with a nice balance of traditional and blended instruction. I will say that one of my concerns about, you know, rethinking the early primary model at this point really is about timing and the face of the, and and I guess timing. The the, you know, that shift to full day for our four-year-olds would be a a big shift, I think, curricularly for our teacher to prepare for in May. And coming off the heels of, you know, a a very unpredictable school year for the past year and a half, I think that that would be a really big challenge. That, you know, Amy's an educator, there's a lot of educators in the room, teachers are tired right now. And I think that having an unplanned reaction that, or an unplanned idea at this point could really, while it is a great idea, I think the timing of it could be hard. You know, so I I just wanted to throw that out there too, just my perspective. But if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. That's what I'm thinking at the moment. Yes, I can do my principal's report. Maybe that's what you wanted me to do all along and I didn't understand, so I apologize, I got on my soapbox for multi-age there. So, um, the sixth grade has raised salmon from eggs and released them into the Farmington River at People State Forest last week. That was a really exciting opportunity for our students and the first field trip of the year. And I just wanted to give a shout out to our staff, students and families. We've had to have a lot of transitions lately between in-person and distance learning and everybody, it it means so much when kids come back into the building and they're just so happy to be back in person. But then when you see them online, they're still working hard and happy. And parents are so responsive and really doing everything they can to make this meaningful. And our our teachers are, you know, switching things on a dime. So it's been a, you know, an unpredictable year, but I really feel like everybody's positive attitude has contributed with the success. Um, we are having a ruler parent presentation next Wednesday at 6:00 PM, it will be virtual. Uh, we met with the Northwestern staff and uh, sixth grade parents and students received um, information about the transition to Northwestern. Mr. Amera and one of the counselors, she's new and I can't recall her name. They are coming to sixth grade on the eighteenth to answer any questions that students have, talk about Northwestern. Um, help them feel comfortable. And uh, I believe that there is a plan for some type of a um, meeting with parents about the transition. So that's coming up. Uh, we're starting smarter balanced assessments on those. Uh, I don't know if you have my report, on the nineteenth and finishing up on the second of June. Uh, we postponed the geography B because of quarantining students. But we rescheduled it for the twenty-first, Mr. Snyder is working hard to prepare for that. And the sixth grade trip, um, we are moving forward with that. I spoke with the Project Osh- O staff today, we're putting all the finishing touches on that. Um, and that is the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. And that's all I have for the principals' report.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you very much Lauren, thank you for for both of those those times. Um, okay. We're gonna move on to our standing committee reports. Um, let's see, of our committees that have met this month, curriculum and technology.
Okay, so we met this afternoon and um, we went over the. Maybe we talked about FBL and um, and the uh, the ruler. The idea of introducing ruler education basically throughout the, so that it will become the um, the the norm for the whole district, including um, Northwestern Regional and the schools in the in the area. Please fill in if I.
That sounds, that sounds perfect.
Okay. Um, next Wednesday, there will be a a virtual um, meeting for parents to share the ruler information. Um, and just introduce them or answer questions about this unified approach. Um, we talked about math testing, that there is anecdotal improvement based upon teacher response to the math specialist. Um, we were also, we also talked about literacy and um, children learning how to write about reading. Getting kids ready with their literacy specialist for the smarter balanced smarter balanced testing. Technology, the introduction of GoGuardian, which I think has been in place all most of the year. This can monitor, um, the teacher can monitor what the students are use or what they're seeing on their computers and keep instruction going strong. And in the way that they can um, block a student from going on to YouTube or see if the student is actually following along at the, in the way that they're supposed to be using the computers. Science and social studies, there's gonna be a meeting this summer to update the social studies curriculum. Really interested in developing a focus on Norfolk. And um, really delving into its rich history and having the students understand, you know, that there is so much more to it than just a beautiful place to live.
That's great.
Um, and science just humming along. Um, Lauren has talked to Winter about health classes for next year. They're thinking about having a small art show soon, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and really just focusing now, the school is really focusing on the smarter balanced testing, which is upcoming. We did talk about the multi-age rollout, which we've followed up on here. And talked about the extent of it and the duration of the process. And whether or not we'd have a soft rollout and, you know, just trying to get uh, some more solid feelings about how this is going to happen. So we are also, we're also looking at it critically as the questions that you were asking Amy, we were also trying to deal with as well. Um, and that was that.
Great, good job.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a very good, good summary. Uh, one of the things that did come up during that group that I wanted to mention to the board was that there is a suggestion that the um, board might like to all read uh, the book that is kind of the founding piece or is written by the man who's, uh, I don't know, the father of ruler, I'm not sure how to call it. But that's called Permission to Feel. It's not a very long book. Um, and it's, it is, I mean, it's an interesting study and I think it's an interesting, it's a, it's a great topic. So if the board would like to read that and then we could meet and talk about it, that would be a very nice thing to do. Or we could, you know, be very well.
Permission to steal.
No. To feel, Permission to Feel.
Feel.
Permission to Feel.
And the board does have some small amount of money in the budget, if you would like to do that, we can order the books for you.
Good.
And we have pizza too.
Good idea.
Are you pizza also?
Pizza, but I don't think pizza buying. We'll definitely will be able to buy you the book if you decide you'd like to do the book study.
I'll pick it up next time, just remind me that I. But Gordon and I thought it would be a good idea to.
I will help you with that pizza Sally.
We'll get it at Monocops, right?
Well, okay.
Cause they only will give us a big large one anyway, so there should be enough.
Perfect.
Permission to eat pizza.
Alright, great.
Can I ask Gordon a question? Um, pardon me, other day about the Norfolk history, of course you know, I'm more excited about that. But do you know how many uh, children at Botel went to the event on Saturday?
No.
About James Mars.
How many?
I don't know, that's one thing, I.
Well, they're having one, they, or they had.
They had Saturday and there's a very good turnout.
Yes.
We have our own fifth, sixth grade history day thing for James Mars, right? Oh, is that, that's upcoming, right? The fifth, sixth.
Isn't that Friday?
So they're they're doing their own thing in school too, but we have baseball games and stuff all day, so.
Yeah, I see.
It was a good time. And there was a memorial.
It would've been nice if some of them could've, they're not just, you know.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, you know, I think the memorial of that day, there was a memorial and then there was, then.
Oh, it was hot.
And then there was.
And it was freezing cold.
Yeah, and windy.
Oh.
But I think that, I saw it as I was driving home and I was like, oh, that's right, we wanted to go to that, but it was a very.
Right.
And and I don't blame them, it's very hard.
And our Congresswoman, Indiana Hayes came, uh, Maria Horn came, you know, there was quite a, a good turnout.
Wow, yeah.
And there was a a good turnout of the public.
Yeah.
Uh, which I was pleased about.
I saw the video, but I don't know how, I don't know any children that did go on Saturday.
I just, I thought it was the Historical Society hosting it.
And I knew it was.
Well, well, cuz I, that's where I saw on social media, they posted.
Right. Partially.
And I saw it was at the church.
It was at the congregation.
And usually the Historical Society stuff isn't really family stuff.
Well, this pretty much was and it was dedicated, they dedicated a stone.
Yeah, I know.
Alright, Phyllis is saying one person talking at a time would be easier to hear, so.
Okay.
I'm talking over one another.
I've never been known to talk too much.
Lauren did go to that event, she said it was spectacular.
It was, it was wonderful. Lauren, I'm so sorry, I didn't see, uh, there were too many people. And everybody was masked, of course, so.
Makes it doubly.
And I was gonna go, but it was my husband's birthday and I said, well, you know, we're we're just gonna stay home, make a cake.
You're excused. Absolutely.
Make dinner, yeah.
Excused.
Yes, that was a great event though, and I'm a lot.
But it was a great event.
Good idea. Okay, so uh, moving on to our uh, the Health and Wellness Committee, did that, that that event in March?
We are meeting tomorrow morning.
We tomorrow morning, okay. Okay, um, was there anything you'd like to report from Shared Services, Gordon?
Uh, they, we canceled the meeting last month. So our upcoming meeting is, our our next meeting is upcoming, it's in two weeks.
Okay, perfect. Um, from the PTO, uh, I want to tell you about the talent show, cuz I love the talent show and it's gonna happen this year. Um, I believe it's June fourth, let me make sure I've got that right, it's the first Friday, okay, good.
I did it.
Right, yes. Um, and we're gonna try to do it outside this year. I haven't yet talked to the, my uh, tech crew yet, but I'm gonna say to John right now. The, over the, over the weekend, we had that very nice memorial, um, or we we hosted the memorial and used the covered playground, which is the first time I had seen it with the lights. The lights are so good, so happy about the lights, it's like a very nice space.
And I'm very happy about that orange strip painted.
Oh, that it goes, yeah.
The trip stop, yes.
But aren't the lights wonderful?
The lights make a big, the lights make a big difference, yeah.
What a difference, oh my gosh.
And so I don't know if it might be possible to use that space for the talent show, I don't know how the acoustics will work, but.
Might be a show, yeah.
But it's something to think about, so.
Right.
I think if possible, if we can have it outside, I think that might be kind of fun. I attended a, the regional concert over the weekend.
Well, that was fabulous.
And that was great outside and, a- anyway, I have confidence in the, in my uh, sound friends to make it all work.
Oh, he'll make it work.
But the talent show will be uh, that first weekend in June. So make sure you keep that weekend free.
Could I ask a question? How did, how much money did we make, um, the PTO make on the sweatshirt sale?
I was gonna talk about that.
Well, success, we'll talk, yeah, we'll talk about that.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't answer you.
No, no, no. Um, I also was gonna say, uh, coming up for the the PTO this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So I actually should've said that already, thank you to the teachers in in our midst and to all of our wonderful teachers. The PTO will be uh, doing a luncheon on Thursday. I know that the administration has nice things planned for the teachers all week as well. Um, also want to share that the PTO, um, as you all know, is uh, pretty newly a five oh one C three. We are really beefing up the way so we can receive money. We can get, we can take money in any way you wanna give it to us. Cash, checks, PayPal, Square, Venmo. And so whatever you, whatever is your preferred um, way to share your riches, the PTO is ready to say thank you. Then, uh, I I think maybe uh, Ginger can fill us in on all the great stuff happening with sixth grade, their fundraisers and how they're doing.
Right.
So, so sixth grade fundraiser, so unfortunately this year we're not doing the pasta dinner or whatever. But we did, I did a second custom ink run, um, of just sweatshirts and T-shirts. Um, we made another like five hundred dollars. Um, I think I forgot to adjust the prices on how much we get, but we got some other cash donations. Uh, but we sold like uh, over three hundred items or something, so I mean. So we did go on the second run. Um, and there's, there are plans to continue a long term with sort of sweatshirt, T, you know, T-shirt fundraising. Uh, which might look a little different in the future, but I was under a little pressure this year to try to get some money for the class trip.
True, right.
Um, uh, but thanks to um, Lisa Bazano and other sixth grade parents and other community members. We do have a raffle, sixth grade raffle. Um, right now, it's just on Rally Up, I'm making a flyer, another one today. Uh, we've already raised six hundred and five dollars on that.
Wow.
Um, and we, I haven't even really pushed, I did one post on it and raised six hundred dollars. So I'm gonna, now that the T-shirts and sweatshirts are over, I'm gonna, we have until May twentieth. Uh, we're gonna do the, we're gonna have the kids, some of the sixth graders, actually do live raffle drawings. Um, but we will also be selling physical raffle tickets for it at the Botel Benefit Concert on May fifteenth in the town center. Um, Michael Cobb, one of our sixth grade parents, is putting together this uh, concert with local and, you know, tri-state sort of artists. Uh, they'll be performing down in the Boardwalk area and so we can all kind of gather around it to view. Uh, the sixth graders and families will be collecting donations for it. We'll also be selling some icebox water bottles and masks that we have.
Good.
Um, and, you know, having those kids walk around with their Class of Twenty Twenty One shirts and begging for money. So that will, that they won't have to beg, people will just give it to them.
I hope we can get the garbage picked up before that day.
Oh, well.
The garbage in that area is unreal.
Oh, you mean down low?
Yes.
Well, I think that we can blame the bear for that, I will say.
Well, I know, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying we need to get it picked up. It's awful to have people's uh, there for such as events, such as this.
About that, maybe I will reach out to my RISCA about that.
The audience will.
Yes, would you be?
Yeah, the audience will, will be in town.
The audience will be up, 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 uh.
Pardon me?
The audience will be up, up, up above on station place.
But even so, you see, you see it, uh, uh, it's right there, it's unbelievable how much there is. Okay, sorry, didn't mean to, that's what I said.
No, right, alcohol.
So you made five hundred dollars from the sweatshirts, is that what you're saying?
On the second round, in total, we've made, we made eighteen hundred dollars on the two.
On the sweatshirt, okay.
On the sweatshirts, T-shirts, masks, water bottles.
Oh, good, okay.
So that was eighteen hundred dollars.
And six hundred on the raffle.
And so far, six hundred on the raffle and that still has three weeks left to collect.
Not too. So we'll have a lot more than that, okay?
I think so. And so, uh, the raffle is you just, instead of uh, going for individual baskets, we just did general baskets. Some people are like, but I just want that one basket. So I will try to do like a Yankee swap, so I'll have all the basket winners, you know, if you don't like your basket, maybe I'll swap it with another basket. You know, so I can at least get. You don't wanna say, you get what you get and you don't get upset? No, because they're being nice and they're donating, they're, you know. It might be fun, Yankee swaps are fun. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, I love, you know, so yeah, you can add, when you get there, you can pick a number and then we can go around and do the swap. I love Yankee swaps, so. That's the greatest thing about moving to New England, I was not a New Englander before.
Right.
So it's a great tradition, um, I think that's all.
Well, that's good, I'm glad you've done so well with the money.
Right, oh, and I did, um, I wrote out a grant to the Norfolk Children's Foundation to cover what we sort of are short on for the class trip. Uh, I don't know, I think they met last night or tonight, so hopefully I'll hear from them how much. I was told to just do a blanket one for all eleven students instead of individually.
How much are you short?
Um, we're short around fourteen hundred dollars right now. Um, I I asked for a little bit less than that, um, cuz we do have to cover food as well. Um, so, and not all the food, luckily, I, Lauren and I talked, um, since uh, lunches are covered for all students, the cafeteria will be providing breakfast and lunch for the students, so we just have to cover dinner. Since this, you know, that's covered federally. So I'm really happy that we could coordinate that, that sort of alleviates some guesswork.
Sure.
The kids get their lunch.
And breakfast.
Oh, yeah, I said, yeah, and lunch, so lunch, breakfast and lunch are covered.
Good.
So, we just have to worry about feeding dinner to kids who are picky twelve-year, eleven and twelve-year-olds. And that's, there's some that don't eat pizza, so, well, chicken nuggets, I think that would, and pizza, so. Uh, as long as they're, they're eating something, they'll be happy.
Is there any way in a bulletin or something, uh, Norfolk now is too late, but to ask townspeople for?
For.
A donation?
Well, we have that concert that we.
Now that we have.
Yeah, okay, the concert concert will do it, okay.
Yeah.
Right, and we, I have on the flyers that I sent out, you know, that to email to, you know, I I kind of wanted someone to get thing, things out of their donations. Um, so anything that they do for the custom ink or the raffle, they can tax deduct because it's, the PTO is hosting.
Right, and it's clearly explains to them that it's tax deductible.
Um, on the raffle, this raffle, I will definitely make, make it clear that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a big help to us, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I can.
Right. Actually, I think you should be a little bit careful with the way that you phrase that because you actually, if you get something.
Oh, then it's not.
It's not tax deductible. So if you're gonna do it that way, you have to think of it as like.
A donation.
You, you, it's like, um, it's, if it's a purchase, then you know it's not taxable, I think, but if it's a.
Alright. Cuz they are buying entries, but in order for us to run the raffle, we have to be nonprofit.
Yeah, so I think it's, I can, we can talk more about it, but it's like, you have to, just like it's a donation and you get a gift.
Alright, yeah.
As opposed to you're purchasing a something, but we can talk more about it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, right? So that's, that's.
Donating something that you put.
Yeah, and promotion, uh, Lauren didn't say in her report, promotion is the, uh, June fourteenth, six PM. So if you want to attend, um, I know she's getting uh, from the families, how many family members are coming to see if we have to limit? Just to be safe in the gym, but that announcement hasn't been made yet.
I did ask the custodians to figure out how many chairs we could get in there. It was six seat apart and I haven't gotten a number yet back, but at least we'll know what that number is. And if the students are on the stage and the presentations are up there, we'll be able to fit more on board.
And we can group families together as long as.
Yes, yeah.
Right, and we can group families together as long as they're sort of apart, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think that's all I have for sixth grade stuff.
Great.
I can't wait till June 15th.
Sixth grade parents.
And make attention to my job that we.
No, no, you need to enjoy this. And May 15th is the concert.
May 15th, between, I think he has two to seven.
Two to seven.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, there's some amazing musicians playing.
Wow.
I, is, uh, is Joshua DiCervo and Janie DiCervo one of them, I believe?
I, I think so.
Oh, good.
Uh, Josh has been talking, texting me that we have to buy a microphone and, uh, and I was thinking, well, I have my, I have this friend. Got my mic. And singing back, it's fine, but, uh, we'll get our own, we have that.
We know who that is.
We're, we're trying to have as many microphones as possible so that each person.
Just not sharing.
Yeah.
Right. Yes, because singing adds in the microphones, it's a problem. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and so as a reminder for everyone, the PTO, uh, is kind of the blanket organization, but the sixth grade does do its own fundraising. And so, um, that is why, you know, the PTO, the sixth grade parents, they work very hard. And, uh, and Ginger has worked very hard this year on her, on her classroom and making it all work together, so thank you very much. Okay, um, let's see, this one was invited, uh, Board of Finance, is there anything?
No, but I'm gonna yield that position to John, because I just don't go, so, and he understands whatever he hears and when I do go. He usually gives a report, so.
So, um, I, I was in class when the last straight-up board, board plan meeting was, but at the hearing. The budget was presented, our budget's in it, and, um, it comes up for a vote, the town meeting on May 10th, so.
May 10th.
And that is going to be here?
That's gonna be, yes, it's in Jim's, here at the school.
So I attended that.
About time.
It's, uh, seven?
I think it's 7:00.
Seven.
Yeah, 7:00 PM, thank you. I, I used to get a list of all of the dates and times of all the meetings and I did not get that this year, so I feel bad that I missed the last meeting, but I'll get to this one.
So I attended that one by Zoom, I couldn't quite tell, was there, was there, how many people were there, do you think? Just curious.
Maybe 15 people?
Okay, so I saw Sally there, I saw you there.
I was there, you were there.
Half of them went to Florida, pardon.
I do love Zoom meetings, so.
15 is about right, there might have been 17, I did count at one point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. All right, um, does the band group have anything that they'd like to? All right, well then, let's see.
All right, wait, I need to circle back. Oh, no, I think, our second reading of the homework policy.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry about that.
That's all right.
All right, so we're on our second reading of the.
The second reading of the homework policy in I can, because we did it virtually the other night, the Kathy, um, last, at the April meeting. Kathy was kind enough to print hard copies for this evening, so. Thank you. Kathy doing. Thank you. Wow. This is the longest-running policy. This has been a lot, long in the making, but we're in the home stretch.
Yeah.
Final stages.
Something I really like about this policy is that it really does, it gives a good structure, but gives a lot of, um.
明确的建议.
Yeah, and but just power to the, to the teacher, or you know, it really relies on the professional judgment of the teacher, and I think that that's really important, so. So at this point, uh, we're looking to make a motion to adopt this policy.
Adopt this policy.
Yes.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Can I move the way adopt the homework policy?
Uh, so, okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay, motion carries. Was there anything else that the policy committee did?
Can your dog eat this now, please? Sorry, I had to do it, I had to. Policy committee members, we will need to set a time to meet in May prior to our June meeting to wrap up for, um, before, stuff before the end of the year, so. Before we leave the room tonight, we'll have a meeting date if at all possible.
Okay, you guys are gonna conference and, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, um, we've already dealt with the non-lapsing fund agreements, um.
Wait, unfinished business, I just need to add something, I, I received a message from Amy.
Oh.
That she recalls that the Board of Finance capped that fund at 1%.
Yes, they did.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to, I wanted, I was, I meant to go back to that and say that, yeah, so with that, that, um, non-lapsing fund agreement. Um, the law allows for 2%, but the agreement is written as 1%. All right, that's. Yes, you guys have.
Oh, right, that was under new business too, I was trying to put it under unfinished business.
And I put it under correspondence, we're like, we're totally covering that. All right, well, I think that we have reached the end of our agenda and so, um, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. A second?
I second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Should we, do we put the room back together or leave?
No, we'll take you out tomorrow.